Get ready to get kicked off. So, good morning. The May ninth, two thousand twenty twenty-three virtual meeting of the Anaroma County Council is now in session. We are here again to discuss, for discussions regarding the proposed FY twenty-four budget for the county. Madam Secretary, please call the room.
Mr. Smith.
The President.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey, I'm calling his name. I do not see that he's joined the meeting yet. Ms. Hummer.
Present.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian. Hi, Ms. Radvian, that's my apologies. Ms. Radvian did send an email saying that she would be unable to attend today, so she is absent. And Ms. Ledbetter.
Present.
Uh, Ms. Bowler.
Present.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, we have five council members in attendance, one absent, and our county auditor in attendance as well.
Thank you, thank you. So, the county executive, any comments from the colleagues before we kick it off? All right, seeing no questions, the county executive is proposing amendments to the budget today, and early supplemental budget. Here to explain things in the budget is Budget Officer Chris Trumbauer. Chris, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, council. I'm Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. For the record, as the chair indicated, County Executive Pittman is submitting to the council this morning, and what we're calling an early supplemental. This is a little bit unusual, but there's no, there's no change to general fund, and there's no real policy changes here. What we're doing, since we finalized the budget leading up to the May first introduction, several additional state funding and federal grants have, have come to reality. And we wanted the council and we wanted the auditor's office to be working on the latest and most current versions of those. So, you should have a supplemental letter that details these changes. But just for expediency, I will run through them really quickly for the record. The first thing is, we got a federal grant for our electric vehicle charging project in the capital budget. So, that will add new federal funds to that project. We're consolidating funding for the Ralph Bunch Community Center, just to coordinate the various funding sources that are coming in for that one project. We also got an additional state grant for fifty thousand dollars for Brooklyn Park Elementary School. And then, we got notified by the state that we have an increased program open space allocation. So, we are putting those extra dollars into Eisenhower Golf Course and Greenways, Parkland, and open space on the capital side. And then, finally, the county had a legal action regarding the PCB toxins, and we got a settlement. We were bookmarking about five million dollars for a capital project to deal with remediation and mitigation there. But it turns out, when we got the check, it was for more than that. It was an additional one point two million. So, we're just simply appropriating those additional funds into that capital project. And then, since we're introducing these amendments, we took the opportunities to correct several technical errors resulting, or related to positions. These, the money was correct in the budget. The positions were misstating. There was one instance in the CIA Office and one instance in Office of Finance. So, that's it. The letter details these a little bit more, and you have draft amendments submitted to you. So, we just wanted to get these on the record and make sure the council and auditor's office were working on the most current information. So, with that, I thank you, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Right. Any questions from colleagues? I see Ms. Fiedler, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate that explanation, Mr. Trumbauer. Can I assume that we will still be able to do, I guess, a supplemental to the supplemental down the road? Is that accurate?
Yes, this doesn't affect any future considerations, and I believe that we're just setting the public hearing for these on the same date that you would do what, what we would call the real supplemental later in the process. So, this is, this is simply to officially enter this new information so that you guys have it, and so that the public is aware of it.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
And, Madam Secretary, just for point of order, so we're going to motion to waive the public hearing on this?
That is correct. The charter allows the council to waive that public hearing if you choose by five votes.
Okay, so, under section seven oh nine of the, actually, of the Charter for Anaroma County, if the county executive proposes amendments to the budget so as to increase items in the budget or add items to the budget, the county council must give reasonable public notice of the proposed amendments and hold a public hearing on the amendments. Unless the county council waives the requirement for a public hearing, takes five votes to waive this public hearing. So, may I have a motion to waive the public hearing required by section seven oh nine of the charter?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Quick, quick question before we have a second or a motion on that. I just want, for the record, to make it clear that even if we don't hold a hearing on this amendment, there are still two public hearings on the budget in the future. Correct?
That is correct. One of those being Thursday, I believe, at the Rundle Center. And I, and I, when is the next statement, Madam Secretary, for the?
Uh, maybe eleventh, Indianapolis, maybe eighteenth at Crosswood High School. Both begin at seven P M.
Thank you.
Motion to waive the public hearing on these amendments. Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Secretary, please call the room.
Ms. Fiedler.
Hi.
Ms. Radvian is absent. Ms. Ledbetter.
Hi.
Ms. Pickard.
Hi.
Mr. Volkey has joined. Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Uh, that is five in the affirmative, one in the negative, one absent. The motion to waive the public hearing required by section seven oh nine of the charter has passed.
And as the, um, councilwoman stated, we have two public hearings on the budget. All of these items will be addressed, and or if there's questions about these, they will have an opportunity to, uh, communicate on these particular items. So, the motion to waive the public hearing required by section seven oh nine of the charter has passed. The hearing will not be held on that, those specific items. However, public notice and copies of this supplemental budget will be provided on our website following the meeting. So, we will now move on to departmental presentations. We will begin today's presentations with inspections and permit. Please remember to introduce yourself when you speak. And at this time, I will turn it over to, is that Kyle?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I will turn it over to you, and you can do any introductions after that.
Good morning, council members. My name is Kyle Madden. I'm the Budget Analyst for Inspections and Permits. Their budget can be found on page one ninety-six of your budget book, and I will turn it over to Mark in his department to explain their budget.
Good morning. Mark Weidemeyer with the Director of Inspections and Permits. First, I'd like to thank Kyle and his budget team for their assistance with this year's budget. With me today, to my left, is Katie Barker, our Senior Management Assistant. To her left is Raghu Badami, Assistant Director of Development Review and Site Inspections. To his left, Andrew McCara, Assistant Director of Building Plan Review and Inspections. And to my right is Jay Leschinsky, who is the Assistant Director of the Permit Center. While, um, our major department accomplishments are listed in the proposed budget, I did want to take a moment to provide a quick overview of IMP today. Over the past year, this group, as well as all the employees in IMP, have successfully transitioned to the new permitting, licensing, and inspection system. It's quite a heavy lift, but everyone chipped in and did a tremendous job. We are continuing to work on additional changes and improvements to the system with the Office of Information and Technology, and appreciate their continued support. The Permit Center staff have held and continue to hold training sessions with other county and state agencies which utilize the system, as well as external stakeholders, such as the Maryland Building Industry Association and Anaroma County Realtors Associations. These sessions have proved to be extremely helpful and very well received. When we presented our budget this time last year, our department had twenty-six vacancies. I'm very happy to say today that we were down to eleven vacancies department-wide, and are actively interviewing for several of those vacant positions as we move forward. The office personnel's been very engaged with our recruitment processes, and that has been greatly appreciated. As positions have been filled over the past year, I believe that our services to the citizens of the county have improved greatly. I'd also like to recognize two of our newest directors in the land use court group, Jenny Jarkowski and Karen Henry, as we have established excellent working relationships with, between our agencies. It's just been a great, great thing to have happen recently. And I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank each of you and your aides for the open lines communication, connecting us with constituents when they encounter concerns and issues. So, again, thank you. With that, we are in agreement with our proposed operating budget and recommendations, and are open to address any questions you may have from the budget book.
Any questions from, from my colleagues on IMP? So, so I was looking at your, Mark, I was looking at your, um, performance metrics in the, in the data book or in the budget book. And it looks like you get about eleven thousand, you know, six hundred building permits, eleven thousand electrical permits, plumbing permits, grading. I guess, when it comes to standards, I mean, I know we perform a lot. Are, you know, one of the things, well, obviously, the same thing will probably take place with planning and zoning, is, is timeline, timeliness, if you will. And is there a metric or a standard by either your department or industry, industry standards that says, you know, a typical permit should take no more than three days or no more than ten days? Just like we have eight minutes for fire response or, and your medical emergency response. Is there any sort of standards when it comes to timeline that your benchmarks that you put in place or that's industry standards that you, you strive towards that to ensure that we're efficient and moving in a, in a, in a rapid pace to address some of the concerns from the public who, at times, feel like when they apply for a permit, it takes, you know, more than the normal amount of time, at least that's from, from what I've heard in the past.
Sure. So, at least from a permit intake standpoint, our, our goal is to have that permit entered into the system within three days. And typically, we've been well under that, typically next day, if not the same day. I mean, there are a number of trade permits that the applicant can apply for and have issued right away. I think the concerns that you're, you may be referring to are more or less tied to building permits and the review timeline. So, our, our typical review timeline is to have ten working days for agencies to receive that, review it, and enter their comments into the system. Where things sometimes may become problematic, you know, a number of our permits may go out to the Health Department for review or to other agencies, planning and zoning, so that everybody's trying to, to work towards that ten day. There may be circumstances where it can't be done in ten days, and there may be some that are done quicker. But, but generally, our timeline is to have a review completed within ten working days.
So, the, so the ten days incorporates, uh, it going out to, if it has to go to four different agencies, all the agencies get it, uh, you know, three days after it's entered or whatever that, that process is. And then, they have to, or is it, it goes to one department that's ten days, and then after that review, it goes to the next? Is it cumulative or concurrent?
No, it's all concurrent.
Okay.
All agencies receive the permit at the same time.
Do you have, is it an automated database now, or is it still paper? Like, is, you know, are there any processes that is, is pure paper? And, and what's the timeline to automate, uh, that mechanism if, if, if that's the plan?
So, with the new land use navigator, the Sela system, it can all be electronic. However, we, we still do accept paper applications at this time, because some, some people aren't accustomed to the technology. So, we do try and work with them when they do come into the Permit Center to educate them on that process. I would say a majority of it now is online and electronic. We've seen a drastic reduction in the amount of paper plans that we receive. We're reducing our file storage and saving on paper costs. So, it has been very beneficial.
All right, I'll go over to Madam Vice Chair, sorry, hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning this morning. Thanks for being first. I'm looking at your, um, positions, uh, chart, and it looks like we're adding one position and reclassifying seven. Am I, am I adding, am I getting that right? Can you tell me a little bit about that? Please.
So, the one additional position is for a licensing inspector. Physician, currently, we have two licensing inspectors, a chief and admins for trips. And over the past couple of years, there's been quite a bit of like additional legislation proposed that has impacted the ability to do the work. So, it's kind of been cumulative impact of the legislation that's been put in place. Most recently, we're looking at the special events permit that will be handled through our licensing department, the plastic bag legislation. In past years, we had unattended donation boxes, massage therapy. So, it's been a cumulative effect, not just one bill. And I think we reached the point that we really needed that additional position to, to keep things moving. The reclassification, I can let Jay speak to that regarding the permit processor positions.
Morning. Jay Leschinsky, Assistant Director with IMP for the Permit Center. So, currently, we have a total of ten intake positions. Three of those are classified as planning technicians two, and seven are permit processor ones. The key distinction between the two is that the permit processor ones do not process commercial permit applications. So, that means we have, we have only three people who can process every permit that we take in here in the county. Over the years, especially the last few years, and with COVID, its staffing has been quite a challenge. Number one, to recruit people to apply for the positions, but to balance the workload. We've had instances where we've been down to one commercial processor, and that's for every commercial pro, permit application that comes into the county. These two positions are union positions. So, obviously, you know, we need to follow some strict guidelines as to what each category is allowed to do or not to do. So, at, at time, it's been difficult. The other issue we've run into is recruiting staff. The current starting salary for a permit processor is eighteen dollars an hour. So, that's on par, you know, with somebody working down the street here on River Road and at Dunkin' Donuts or McDonald's, starting salary for a planning tech two is twenty-one dollars an hour, which makes a significant difference in the quality of applicants that we receive. So, you know, the idea is if we, if, if, if we have all ten people who can do, process all the permits, it makes it much easier to work and redistribute the workload when we do have vacancies or people are out on vacation during the summertime.
That makes sense to me. Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. It's really helpful as we move forward. Mr. Chairman, if I may ask just one more question and then I'll, I can talk with. So, looking at, um, the performance measures for the Department of Inspections and Permits, it's really more of a comment than a, than a question, I guess, but I'm seeing that decrease. We are seeing a decrease in, um, uh, building, both residential and commercial in the county, are we not? Which I assume is what you're attributing some of the decreases in estimates for building permits, electrical permits, grading permits, things like that.
We, that's Mark Weidemeyer, Director of Inspections and Permits. I, I would tend to agree. I think some of that is definitely related to the economy, the increase in interest rates. There, there has been a slowdown in the overall building industry. So, at this point in time, that's pretty much, you know, the indicator that, that I'm seeing at this time.
All right, I think I'll go to Ms., Ms. Hummer. So, you, next.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. My questions were kind of in the line with what Ms. Pickard just asked. You've made some significant strides in reducing your vacancies since last year. Are there? What would you attribute to? You said you still have like eleven. What exactly are those positions? Are they actually inspectors? And do, and do you really think a big part of it is the, the competition for salary?
So, I'm, the, again, Mark Weidemeyer, Director of Inspections and Permits. I think, uh, a bit of it, well, the vacancies are kind of spread across each group here. So, it's not necessarily concentrated in one area. I think with, with what Jay was speaking to, at least with the permit processor ones, the, the salary is just not in, in line with the job that's required to work within the permitting system, to have the proper skills to deal with the public and our applicants that come into the building each day. Takes a, a different skill set. So, that, I think, is related to the Permit Center. We've had difficulty in the past hiring engineering staff. Raghu can, can speak to that a bit as to what he's experienced. And I think until recently, with the downturn in the economy, we were having difficulty filling the building inspection end. But when you typically see a slowdown in the building industry, we see more applicants coming to the county for a position, looking maybe for a little bit more security in, in a position. But I can let Raghu speak to the engineering portion.
Good morning. Raghu Badami, Assistant Director of Inspection and Permits. So, what we have been finding since the last year or so, maybe due to COVID or other reasons, across the industry wide, there has been a shortage of finding qualified engineering, that type of skill set of work, and again, the ability to not only hire them and also retain them. We have had cases where people had multiple job offers. And from a, from a county standpoint, offering that, that good salary package has, has been a tremendous help, being able to compete with the private industry, because we have had, like I said, folks coming in and saying, I have three offers. Match it or be there. And that has been a challenge for us, and I appreciate the help of, 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 both internally in terms of ability to advertise outside of the regular advertising process, through LinkedIn, through other job portals, that has provided us the ability to hire good talent, and also the ability to retain staff. I think that has been the key thing too. So, we, we are making progress, uh, as much as possible, and we are continuing to streamline processes internally. And like Mark mentioned, the, our ability to open lines of communication of the different stakeholders, both inside and outside, has been really helpful. Just provides a different flavor. If you compare that to a private site, our ability, the county, as diverse as it is, that somebody coming in as a major level or an engineer two or three, their ability to work across various departments, I think, helps them provide like a well-roundedness to the, to their skill set. I think that, that has been a good selling point from our standpoint.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And next, we'll go over to Ms. Ledbetter.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for being here with us. I have, actually, there are follow-ups off of my colleague's questions from just a minute ago. I'll start with a follow-up on Ms. Hummer's question. She asked the first part of what I was going to ask. But, um, those eleven vacancies, do you know how many of those are long-term? Meaning, you've had them vacant for a year or more versus how many of those are more recent within the past year? Do you have that breakdown available?
Sure.
Proximate is fine.
Sure. No, Mark Weidemeyer, again, is Director of Inspections and Permits. I would say, long-term, we have two positions that have been long-term. And, and one of those being, um, the, the senior engineer position in the Stormwater Work Group. Strike, strike team, I'm sorry. Thank you, Randy.
Awesome.
I can speak to that, Mark. So, with, with specifically with the senior engineer for the strike team, it's a, it's a new position that we have created in the last year's budget. And we were able to make that offer, and the employees just backed out. And there's been a challenge trying to hire somebody with that hybrid skill set at the intersection of land development experience and restoration experience, but we are looking for a qualified candidate at this point.
Awesome. Thank you. And then, the other, uh, follow-up question I had, it was to Mr. Smith's, uh, question, and I'm taking a spout a minute or two, um, to the metrics that you were sharing as far as the, the amount of time for applications, you know, to, to be, you know, put online, to be addressed, the, the, the three days and the ten days. My, I guess my only question is, is that, and forgive my ignorance if it's readily obvious. I have not been on the website recently. Is that information that is readily available to the public? So, if I were to be online looking to file a permit application, would I know, be easy to, to real, to, to know what that expected turnaround time is to set my expectations appropriately?
Sure. Mark Weidemeyer, again, Director of Inspections and Permits. So, we have, as, as we mentioned, introduced the new permitting system. I guess it's been about a month ago that due dates were not accurately reflected in the system, but they are now. So, that each agency that has a role in the review of that permit will also, also illustrate the due date for those comments, and, and also have the reviewer's name as well.
And can, can the applicant see that information?
Yes, as long as they are listed as a contact on that permit, yes, they can see that.
Awesome. Thank you very much for your answers. I appreciate it.
Certainly.
Okay, um, yeah, no, appreciate, uh, have any additional comments from colleagues? I see no hands, but I, I do want to sort of reiterate and stress the importance of, uh, whatever we can do. Certainly, I, uh, can advocate for when it comes to being efficient with, and this is for both IMP as well as planning and zoning. Whatever efficiencies we can find and identify when it comes to ensuring that we don't have these, these scenarios where you have individuals or entities that have submitted a permit, and it takes months for that to be processed. If there can be a mechanism to highlight that in the system, say, hey, if it's over thirty days or over ten days, it flags red, and it alerts everyone in the command, the chain, chain of command to say, hey, we gotta, we gotta resolve this, right? And so, I think you hear it, we hear it quite often, and, and you're right, it's probably more building permits, about, about some of those timelines. And so, you know, we, I felt like we've been hearing this for, for over a decade, and hopefully, this new system will help with that. And this isn't, you know, targeted at IMP specifically, but the institution and the process as a whole, so that, uh, we can mitigate that. In my mind, I just feel like some of the stuff, it, it, it shouldn't be overly complicated. And so, if it's a matter of manpower.
And so if it's a matter of manpower or something like that, just be realistic. So if we need to advocate for more manning, we want to give you more manning. Uh, what we don't want is to hear uh uh one month, I mean, not one month, six months or eight months or a year to get a permit approved uh for a backyard deck or something like that. And so uh maybe COVID kind of uh uh aided to that. Uh, that problem set, if you will, and now that we're past that, we'll start to see that come down. But uh it's just one of those things that that uh for me, I feel like I've I've constantly heard here over the years. And I want to ensure that I'm able to advocate to make sure that this this piece, because it's such an important piece, it generates a lot of noise that would prime. And and then the next thing is probably uh or or in that top three is the permitting planning process. And so um just just trying to reiterate the importance of us trying to figure out and how to make it right. And so uh and if it's something we need to do, I'm certainly willing to do it. So uh thank you for uh your your time and your comments. Any any parting, uh Mark, any uh sort of last-minute words uh for your department? Sure. Just again, thank you all for for the time and the questions. Um, and and any of those instances that that you're seeing where permits are lagging or have issues? Again, I hear from either you or your constituent or your aides frequently. You know, please feel free to share those so that we can take a look at them. Um, many times, pardon me, I see that those types of permits that get hung up may be tied up because they needed a variance. Or we're going through, you know, required a site development plan that required another process to go through. So, you know, I'm always happy to take a look at that. We're always looking to improve. And um, you know, again, any of those instances, please share with us so that we can um take a look at it and correct it. So again, thank you, Mark. All right, Madam Chair, do you think? I know, bam, look at that, I knew. Because I know this is your wheelhouse when it comes to uh uh development thing. And this is one piece of that, the cog in a wheel. So Madam Vice Chair.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you to your team, uh Mr. Wiedemeyer. I know you work very closely with with myself and 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 my staff, Kristin, um in supporting our constituents and um out there just getting it done. So I just wanted to say thank you to your entire team. And I look forward to supporting uh your position here in this budget. And hopefully we can work through your personnel issues and get you staffed up. So just just a thank you, not not a not a question, just thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. And then Ms. Ms. Fiebler, see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick echoing of the sentiments from Ms. Pickard. Your department is always so responsive and helpful with constituent needs, so it is greatly appreciated. That's all.
Thank you. All right. That being said, I think we will switch over to capital. Uh, is there any capitals for IMP or we'll just go straight to planning and zoning? Yes, capital for IMP. Okay. All right, uh, Mark, back to you for capital. Sure. Sorry, I'll go ahead and um turn that over to Raghu um to go through the three projects that that we have.
Thank you, Mark. Are we still waiting on Naomi?
She's right, she just got it.
Thank you. Uh, Raghu Badami, Assistant Director of Inspection and Permits. Uh, so we have three uh capital projects. Uh, the first one is on page forty-eight, C five-eight-two-seven-hundred. This capital project was started last year, uh which provided two hundred and fifty thousand dollar seed money. For the last fiscal year, uh we had two active or two ongoing uh mitigation banks that we set up uh within this fiscal year. Uh, one is Rock Hole Creek Park, uh about nine and a half acres. And the second one is the Craft and Civic Association, about three and a half acres. And this essentially allows us to use these as mitigation banks. Um, and whenever there is a CIP project, a trail project, a border fair project, or a county project, uh Wreck and Parks project, this will allow us to, as opposed to making a fee loop, this will allow us to sell those credits. And then that would essentially set up a a uh self-funding mechanism back to the 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 capital account. The second uh capital account or capital project we have is C five-three-one-two-hundred. Uh, this is on page thirty of the budget book. Um, this uh is an existing capital account and we are transferring, uh are asking for requesting transferring of five hundred thousand dollars from the operating reforestation uh fund. Um, and this will essentially allow us to purchase land so that we can use uh uh for the capital mitigation bank from the previous capital budget account. Um, this is a brand-new uh request. Uh, and we have a couple of projects lined up and we are hoping to use this uh within the the next fiscal year, by twenty-fourth. Uh, the third um capital project is C five-eight-nine-four-hundred. Uh, this is on page fifty-seven of the capital budget book. Uh, this is a one-time financial contribution um to the Chesapeake Bay Trust uh uh building, and this will provide as county assistance to Chesapeake Bay Trust Green Campus Project.
All right, um, any questions on the capital uh for IMP from colleagues? All right, Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you. Um, for the uh reforest program land acquisition, do you already have a piece, a parcel in mind, um in particular, or a short list?
Yes, we have a couple of them in mind, yes.
Where are they if you are, if you don't mind?
Yeah, so we have two active projects uh that we are working with Wreck and Parks. Um, uh, that I can get you uh detailed parcel information, but email if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Thank you.
And Chair, if I if I may, uh it's not a follow-up, it's a different question.
Nope, please.
Thank you. Um, and then the forest conservation mitigation. I heard you mention the the Crofton Civic Association. Um, would you just, would you mind giving me just a little bit more detail about that?
So the Crofton Civic Association parcel uh is right off of Route Three. Uh, and this is a parcel that we were able to work with administration of the Crofton Civic Association. So it's essentially the three-acre, three-and-a-half-acre open space parcel that is currently vegetated. And we were able to uh replant it with forest uh this past fall. Um, and the the thought process is that we will be putting in a in a county easement and we'll be using about hundred thousand dollars from the 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 reforestation program acquisition. I know you were asking for the uh projects, so this is one of the projects. We were hoping to use this money to put in county easement on that parcel property.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you very much for the information. I appreciate it.
All right, seeing no additional hands. Uh, IMP, Mark, uh thank you all for us, you know, giving us this back brief and uh look forward to uh uh supporting you all in this budgetary process. I think at this time, we're going to switch over to operating and go to planning and zoning. And then Kyle, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good morning again, Kyle Madden, I'm the Budget Analyst for the Department of Planning and Zoning. Their budget can be found on page one eighty-seven of your budget book. And I will turn it over to Planning and Zoning to explain their budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Good morning. I'd like to start by thanking the Council and the Budget Office for the opportunity to be speaking to you today. Uh, as most of you know, I am Jane Jarkowski, um and I've been with the Office of Planning and Zoning since January. Uh, members of my staff that are with me today are Christina Pampa and Cindy Carrier from the Planning Division, and Allison Valiant and Alice Christman from Administration. And since taking the helm, I've had the pleasure of meeting with each of you, whether it was one-on-one, um or a more formal setting, or in the case of Mr. Smith, out in the field on Friday at Cedar Hill. And uh I'll be reviewing operations and then get right back into our budget. Hey, Kyle, is the slide going to be shown? There we go. Next slide. Thank you. OPZ is organized into four divisions, Planning, Development, Zoning, and Administration. The Planning Division is dedicated to the community planning efforts that include Plan Twenty-Forty, Historic Preservation, and Data Analytics. And this team will grow in the next fiscal year. The Development Division is responsible for the land use application and approval process for subdivisions, commercial properties, and more. This division also includes our critical area and transportation experts. The Zoning Division reviews and makes recommendations for proposed land use changes. And they also have the tough job of managing zoning complaints and cases from start to finish. Uh, finally, Administration makes sure we hire good people, manage the budget, and keep our technology and facilities functional. All of these divisions are dedicated to public service and are exemplary in their ability to pivot and service our audiences. And the next slide, please. There we go. We approach this budget with a strong look at what we need. The budget includes new positions, support for the accelerated region planning process, and transferring a team from wrecks and parks. We will start by looking at Personnel Services, Personal Services, excuse me. OPC's budget is ninety-three percent personnel. This is par for the course in the industry. This work requires trained experts. The increase for Personal Services is primarily due to the proposed pay and package, as well as the addition of transferring a team from parks to wrecks and one new position. This budget includes a Program Specialist Two, who will manage intake and processing for the Maryland Public Information Act request. And OPZ absorbs this responsibility in March of twenty-twenty-one and was advised to project three to four cases per month. But currently, we're managing an average of forty-two cases per month, which is a ninety-five, nine-hundred-and-fifty percent increase over the protect projections. Currently, this work is managed by a contractor, but is complex enough to warrant a full-time county employee who can provide quality service to our residents and customers. The Program Specialist Two is the only full-time classified position that is new to the county. This budget also includes contractual support for the Planning Division, including more resources for region planning and the Cultural Resources Team. The increased support will ease workload compression, seeing as the Planning Division reduced the region planning process by twenty-five percent. The Agricultural Preservation Team will transfer from Recreation and Parks to OPZ's Planning Division. There are two employees who will transfer to OPZ, a Planner One and a Program Specialist Two. In summary, Personal Services includes contractual support, a new pay package, and three additional positions, two of which are transfers and one of which is new. The remaining seven percent of the budget is focused on operations, facility improvements, and community programming. This budget has support for region planning logistics, including in-person meeting expenses and a community grant that would reach underrepresented communities. Despite our best efforts, um community planning input is mostly from a white demographic with above-average income. A community grant program will support a more inclusive planning process. OPC will have costs associated with a comprehensive office renovation in fiscal year twenty-four. So to recap, the highlights of our changes, this budget includes one new new position, transfers two positions from wrecks and parks, a total of three additional employees in the department. We also have resources to support the accelerated regions, region planning effort, and facility upgrades. Every day, OPZ has employees in the field to address land use complaints, review site development plans, answer zoning questions, or even discover fossils that predate the Chesapeake Bay. These examples are not representative of all the work that we do, but we are busy and working hard to serve our communities. I appreciate all your time and we are happy to take any of your questions. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Yes, it was Jenny, it was good meeting you in the field uh and seeing uh seeing you in action. And so uh just conveying kind of, you know, look at IMP and planning, planning and zoning, almost like a salt and pepper, right? They're they're both ingredients that are needed on that table for us to be successful. And so uh uh when it comes to planning and zoning, it it this is a part of that that infrastructure, the the internal mechanics of the county government, uh where I I definitely want us to be successful at it. So whatever we can do and I can do uh to assist us that from a budgeting standpoint, I I will certainly champion it all day long, just to make sure that whether it's a homeowner who is trying to install a deck on the back of their house or a uh a development process that has been sort of uh uh the uh processed and and there is sort of political leadership that literally is, is also encouraging uh growth in these specific areas uh that, you know, we, at least the system works, and so it doesn't take years to make something else, make something happen. And so, you know, that's, I'll say my my additional comments towards the end, but I do want to give it to Amanda Fiebler, uh who I saw him uh raise here momentarily. So Ms. Fiebler, on you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Mr. Jarkowski. It's good to see you again. I appreciated the uh the presentation. Um, just for clarification purposes, the new um position, the Planner One, did you say that that was the position to help expedite Plan Twenty-Forty? I just want to make sure I understood that.
Ms. Jarkowski, would you like me to address that question?
Sure.
Hi, Ms. Fiebler. I'm Alice Christman. I'm Deputy PZO for the Administration Section. A better title might be COO, but we've got what we got on the org chart. Um, the Planner One is actually a part of the Wrecks and Park, the team transferring from Wrecks and Parks in the Agricultural Preservation Program. Um, within the budget, we have proposed to bring on um two contract planners. That would be like full-time senior urban planners. Um, and you know, we have our experts from our long-range planning team to to dive into like a lot of the work program that we propose that they would be doing. So um that's where the additional support would be coming from. In addition to also increasing hours for our uh GIS Senior Planner, who is currently on staff. A chunk of the work that we'll be working on is uh the transition of the work program. Not only do we reduce the region planning process, but we shifted some of the education, shifted the education to be more self-directed. So the work they'll be putting together includes briefing papers and then providing supplemental support as well. So um the only new position is the is a Program Specialist Two to support the Maryland Public Information Act program.
Okay, that I appreciate that information. Mr. Chair, can I just ask one quick follow-up question?
Yes, ma'am. Please do.
Thank you. So understanding the contract um element to the positions to support, i- is it intended that there, you know, in a year from now or when we complete all regions, that that would no longer be a necessary position? I'm seeing yes is okay.
Yeah, through FY twenty-six for the for the two contractor positions. Correct.
Great. Thank you.
And then I will go over to Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to ask uh for a little more information on how we're going to reach how we're going to reach the demographics we're looking for on our region planning with the community grants. Can someone just share a little bit more? I'm extremely interested in making sure we elevate all communities in the region planning. And it is a challenge, but um we do have a pretty significant um gap in um engagement in the county. So I'm, I just wanted to hear a little bit more about that, if you don't mind.
Yes, Christina Pampa, can you answer that question for you?
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Cindy Carrier.
Okay.
Hi, good morning. Cindy Carrier, uh Office of Planning and Zoning. So as um Jenny mentioned, uh we've had a difficult time despite our best efforts of engaging um a wider population of people. So we um did a little bit of research into what other areas are doing and found that the city of Baltimore has a successful program using nonprofits. They're already out in the community, um engaging with them and understanding what type of um issues they are are facing in their communities. And also, the uh Anaronda County Health Department deploys a similar uh program. So um that's, that's what we're kind of aiming for is is that type of program, reaching out to um utilizing nonprofits to get uh a wider interest uh in stakeholders.
Just to to tag into Ms. Carrier's comments, uh the city of Baltimore deployed a similar program for their city planning efforts called the Community Eng- Community Engagement Leadership Team. Uh, we can provide that link to you if you're interested in learning more as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. I would like that link. Thank you.
And I will go back to uh Ms. Fiebler. See your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I neglected to ask one follow-up question. Um, this is a question that I've, I think, is asked every budget year. Um, what is the current vacancy rate for the department?
Ms. Jarkowski, I've got this one. Oh, I run the recruitment efforts. So I've, I've been on the front lines of our recruiting. Um, I'm proud to say we're at five vacancies. Uh, most of the vacancies are uh from within the past five, six to eight months, and uh most of those vacancies and most of those vacancies are actually due to retirements and promotions. So we are actively recruiting for all five. That includes one Planner III, two Planner IIs, and two Planner IIs. And just for record, we have 14 Planner IIs on our roster, so it's just inevitable that we're going to have a Planner II opening at any given, any given day.
Okay, thank you.
I'm definitely going to put Ms. Christmas on my phone or friend in case I have any questions. Quick data point, do you all keep metrics on how long planning submissions are within your wellhouses? Like somebody submits something, and then on average it takes, you know, six months for that package to be completed? Is there any metrics that you use to rate yourself?
Um, hi. Yes, we can share that information with you. We've started to track that, as, as you probably heard, heard previously with Mr. Wiedemeyer, myself, Mr. Wiedemeyer, and Ms. Henry have been working very hard the last six months or so to kind of have, to make sure that we have the proper processes in place, working with each other, making sure that, you know, we're not missing any gaps and things of that nature. But I can give you some, some rough data on, you know, how long it takes us to get a plan out. Oftentimes, and I think we talked about this the other day when we were on site, you know, there's, there's so many factors that can happen. It can be that we didn't get the right information, or that perhaps the development has changed, and they need to pull it up and, you know, reevaluate. So there's just many things that, that absolutely come into play with, with this. So I would caveat it that it looks like it's, like it's good or bad, depending upon what it is, but we can share some of that data with you for sure.
All right.
And that would come out of our commercial section, just so you know. I am looking forward to Loon and Estella coming online. I think that that will be very helpful for the public to be able to track just whatever is going through our, our realm here in, in the land use departments in Anarundel County. And, and so we're looking forward to, I'm looking forward to it, you know, getting online and having all the information available to the public at any given time.
All right. And it's more of a, for me, it's more of a, sort of a mental guide for me. Every time I go to medical or, you know, take my annual, your physical exams, the doctor's saying, hey, you're, you're trending, you're trending, your weight is trending upwards. And I'm like, well, how do you know that? What do you say? Because last time you were lighter, right? And so I think in this, in this instance, if the goal is to be efficient, you know, some sort of metrics that you're like, okay, we are going in the right direction, right? That curve should be going down instead of upwards. And so, but we don't know that until we see the chart. And so having that, that kind of puts us in a mental space of like, hey, well, how can we make this one more efficient? Not necessarily a criticism or anything, just, just creating an infrastructure that allows you to be able to assess yourself so that you can properly evaluate where you need to make course corrections. That's all.
Absolutely. And we also give you the link to Anarundel Stat as well, as we report them monthly.
Good news is, I'm now back when it's downward weight trend, so just that. All right, any other questions from, for planning and zoning? All right, I don't see any hands up. Well, thank you, PZ, for your awesomeness and your, your leadership. And Jenny, about Ms. Arkowski, I'm certainly glad you're on board and look forward to helping where I can. And I'm sure certainly the Council will as well. We will now transition over to, I think this is solid waste, Madam Secretary. And so Kyle, I'm sorry, Sam will switch over to you.
All right, good mornings. For the record, Sam Chirriaco, Budget Office. Since we're starting with solid waste, that will be on page.
Sam?
Yes.
We're doing general fund.
Okay.
On the order of the budget book, because that's what we thought.
That's what the presentation is in.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good to know. So please turn to page 207 of your budget book. That is where DPW starts, and then I'll hand it over to Karen.
Thank you, Sam. Good morning, distinguished council members and Madam Auditor. My name is Karen Henry. I'm the Director of the Department of Public Works. I first want to publicly thank Sam for all, and the whole Budget Office for all of their help in getting us here on our budget. If someone could, please bring up our presentation. I do want to introduce my staff that is here on the call today. Alex Bakie, Deputy Director of Highways. Kim Clooney, Acting Assistant Director. Rhody Holdhouse, Deputy Director of Waste Management Services. Eric Michelson, Deputy Director of the Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration. Beth O'Connell, Deputy Director of Engineering. Noelle Anaskevich couldn't be here, but she is our Deputy Director of Utility Operations and plays a very important role in the Department of Public Works. You can go to the next slide. The Department of Public Works provides essential services that are taken for granted by most county residents, but that's okay with us because it just means we're doing our job well. It means we're providing safe roads for residents to drive to work with straight road markings, working traffic signs, and appropriate signage. It means we're providing safe and award-winning drinking water for their morning coffee and shower. It means they can flush their toilet and not worry about their waste contaminating the Chesapeake Bay because their treated wastewater exceeds regulatory requirements. It means they can put their trash, recycling, and yard waste out to the curb and know it will be picked up and hauled away. And when they clean out their basements, they have a place to take their extra trash to one of the best-run landfills in the country at our Millersville landfill. It means that the polluted stormwater runoff is being managed so that the flooding of yards is reduced, waterways are restored, and the Chesapeake Bay is protected. Finally, it means that they can go to a beautiful park and enjoy their day, watch their kids play sports. It means their police and fire personnel, who so bravely protect our residents, have a station to work out of. These places that make our county special, DPW has built. So we have proposed a budget that helps us provide these essential services and be responsive to our residents. You can go to the next slide. How we are organized is by five bureaus. We have Bureau of Engineering. They handle all the capital projects. They have GIS survey and right-of-way acquisition, as well as utility planning. We have a Highways Bureau that's our road and roadside maintenance, storm drains, and traffic engineering. We have Utility Operations, which does all the water treatment and distribution, wastewater collection and treatment. They maintain and repair all of the infrastructure, and we have a 24-hour number that folks can call, really for all of DPW, but it is housed in, in Utilities. And then we have Waste Management Services, which is our curbside recycling and trash collection. We have our three recycling centers, the landfill, leaf composting, and yard waste composting and recycling. And then last, our newest bureau, the Bureau of Watershed Protection and Restoration, is where we do the watershed capital projects, modeling and analysis, ecological assessment and evaluation. And then our stormwater infrastructure program is also within that bureau. Next slide, please. So our budget, it's a big one. We have a request this year of $265 million. That excludes our Utility Debt Service Fund. As you can see, Utility Fund takes up nearly half of the overall budget for Public Works, and I'll go into more detail. Next slide, please. We are, we have, currently we have 762 positions, but we are proposing 769 through this budget. The majority of our staff are labor and maintenance and office support, union, union-represented employees. And as far as the positions go for how our depart, our bureaus are divided up, most of the positions are in the Utility Fund. Next slide, please. So some of the driving factors for where, where we're coming from in this budget is making sure that we are meeting public safety and public health requirements, safety of our roads, health of our water and sewer, implementation of a CIP streamlining plan that was worked on over the summer and into the fall, regulatory, meeting all the regulatory requirements, which we are affected by very many. All the bureaus have significant regulatory requirements that must be met. We're looking at technology upgrades, and nothing new to us, but our maintenance, repair, and replacement of all the critical infrastructure that we're responsible for, and all the equipment that we have to maintain, repair, and replace. And then, of course, efficient and cost-effective operations is one of our main components. Next slide. So I just wanted to bring to your attention that, as you know, we spend a lot in investing in capital projects, and that investment's great and really necessary, but it also brings on a, an operating requirement. So in order to really make these capital projects successful, we have to invest through the operating as well. So just bringing to your attention a few examples of that. Viewworks is our asset management software, and you'll see later we are asking for a position to support that. We spent $4 million on that software. It has been really great. We're getting all of our assets into that system. It's right now being used as a work order system. It has the capability of helping us to make better decisions with what we repair and replace, and in what order we do that in. And so that's one example. Another example is our wastewater treatment plants. We put a lot of money, $283 million, in upgrading them to enhance nutrient removal levels, which has helped us to exceed regulatory requirements. And, but that requires chemicals and other things in order to maintain that. And then the last thing I wanted to point it out is we're, we're looking at a $31 million investment in our automated meter infrastructure, and this is to increase efficiency. It's like smart meters. You've heard of smart meters, and I'll talk more about that later. But this also has an operating component that we're requesting through this budget. Next slide. So general fund, next slide. General Fund is our Bureau of Highways and Engineering, and then the Director's Office is a very small component of that. Most of the budget is in Personal Services and Contractual Services. It's $37 million. Next slide. So we are requesting four new positions in the General Fund. This is very unusual for Public Works to ask for this many positions. I know all of you have been here four years, and Mr. Smith, who was here before, you don't see us coming in here asking for a ton of positions. But we are getting to a critical point where we, that is necessary for us to come to you and ask for positions. So we are requesting two Engineer Threes, one Management. It's two in the, in the General Fund, but we're asking for a third one in the Utility Fund, and I'll explain that. A Management Assistant II and Assistant Chief of Road Operations. The total for all these three positions is $392,000. Next slide. So the engineers that we're looking for, this was brought out of the CIP Delivery Work Group recommendations that we hire more project managers. So we're looking for two from the General Fund and one out of the Utility Fund. And what they are going, what that will allow us to do is reduce the workload of the project managers, meaning the number of projects that they have. Right now, the average is 18 capital projects. We'd like to get that down to 14. We will still continue to augment our staff with HIRI, the contract, contractual staff we have with HIRI. But just to point out, it's a pretty huge difference in the cost between the two. I think it's, it's like two, it's like $250,000 for one project manager from HIRI. I mean, they put a lot of other, you know, that's their overhead and everything, whereas it's like $90,000 for one project manager for, that is a county merit employee. So we, we've learned, but the reason we use HIRI as augmenting our staff is that usually capital projects go up and down in the quantity of which you have, but we've only been going up. We've seen no going down in the future, so that's why we're looking for actual merit employees. And you will see in that graph there is kind of showing we've had 21, for as long as I can remember, although going back to the records, we're looking at 14, but I've been with the department since 2000. We've never asked for a new engineer. So, so you can see that's pretty solid, not asking for much. And now we are asking for those additional positions. And we do have at the bottom here, the, some examples of projects that are in all of your districts, and that is the kind of things that they're managing. Next slide. The Assistant Chief of Road Operations, this is a new position. We used to have it, but it was cut out of our budget from one of the many iterations of the budget where we had to give up positions. What we want to do is restore that. I know all of you, if not you directly, your legislative aide has worked with Jim Small. He is our Chief of Road Operations. What Jim does is he goes out into the field, resident calls, and they have a significant stormwater issue in their yard. Jim goes out in the field, tries to figure out what is that, gets all the resources necessary to come up with a plan in order to correct that situation, gets his staff in there, they go out. But, and so he's highly regarded in the community for solving a lot of problems, that road issues. Well, he's also managing 150, 40 employees, and he also has, you know, not just one homeowner's home, he's got 1,800 miles of road to manage. So he really needs somebody to help him with a lot of the paperwork and emergency response and the regulatory, meeting the regulatory requirements and managing the fleet and all that comes with that. So that's what we're looking for in this position. Next slide. So again, like I said, we don't ask for many people. Mostly, we get to the budget and we're told to, asked to reduce our staff. So you can see our, over the years, how much of a reduction we have faced. We, between fiscal years 20 and 22, we've added three traffic techs. That's it. I just want you to look at that slide and get a sense of, the roads are definitely increasing. So just to take that in. Now, next slide, please. So another thing that is heavily funded in our General Fund is heavy equipment. We have to replace it. It gets old, it doesn't work as well. We're looking at a $1.8 million request, just to keep, give you an idea of what that means is we have right now 4.8 million backlog of current equipment that it's at its useful life or exceeded it. And what we've learned over the years in our experience is that it's best if we can keep our fleet at about eight years old. Not all, some vehicles can last longer, some don't make it to eight, but that's kind of an average. And so what we're looking at the age of our fleet right now is it's 9.15 years. This request helps us get to eight years. I did want to point out that we've seen the cost go up about 30%, and delivery times have extended significantly, a lot of supply chain shortages that we're dealing with. So it does take a long time to get these vehicles, but we have been getting them. It's just, we order them at the beginning of the fiscal year, and we all hope and pray that by, before the end of the fiscal year, we get delivery of those vehicles. Next slide. Onto the Utility Fund.
Karen, do we want to stop and just see if anybody has general fund questions before we move on? I think that's the best way to do it.
Yep, that's great. Hit me with your questions.
Ms. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Henry, I just, I just can't let, I can't let the, that presentation go by without, one, noticing and commenting on the decline of, of staffing over the last 20 years and where we are now. But I also have to commend and, and thank with all the gratitude of my community to the work of Mr. Jim Smalls. He is an amazing individual, and he has tackled the everyday stuff and some of the very unusual stuff in our community with grace, and he's a very generous individual, and he works really, really well with Kristin, serving our community. So I just wanted to give him that shout out. So thank you.
Thank you so much, and I couldn't agree with you more. We're lucky to have him. We don't want to burn him out, so that's why we're asking for that Assistant Chief.
Yeah, I'll definitely jump on a bandwagon. I think given my own staff, Linda Harris has sung his praises as well. Ms. Fiedler?
Um, I, I do have a question, but I'm going to also piggyback because Jim has been amazing and so resourceful and helpful, and I just concur with everything that's been said. But I did have a question on the, let me see what the actual title, the Tree Crew Worker Position. That's not something that we've had in the budget before. Can you go into what that position is intended to do?
Yeah, so that's a reallocation of a vacant maintenance worker position, and the Tree Crew is special, they have to have special certifications in order to cut down trees. You know, one of our many jobs is that we, we take care of the roadside trees, and oftentimes they end up in the roadways when, you know, during a storm, and they have to be cut. Well, there's a lot of certifications involved with that, and a maintenance worker really doesn't meet that requirement, but that's who we've been having do it. So this just allows us to get people with the right certification doing the right, right things.
Okay, um, I might have a follow-up question that I'll, I'll send an email on, but, Mr. Chair, may I ask one new question?
Nope, please.
And Ms. Henry, you may get to this at a later point because you did mention circling back to this, but the automated meter infrastructure, would that work in conjunction with the wastewater study that was mentioned yesterday as far as adjusting EDU structure and all of that?
That's a totally separate initiative, but I'm gonna, advanced metering is in Utility Fund, and I am going to get to that.
Okay, I'll save my additional questions.
Okay.
All right, please, please proceed. All right, uh, please, please proceed, uh, with the rest of the brief.
Okay, on to the utility fund. Um, this is a over a hundred and twenty-two million dollar request. Um, we pretty much evenly divided between personal services and contractual services for utilities. So let's go to the next slide. We are requesting some new positions in the utility fund also. Again, we don't normally come to you asking for new positions, but we're getting to a point where we have to. I'm gonna go into more detail. All of three of these new positions, um, total two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. One of which is that engineer three, which I already mentioned in the general fund. That would be for the utility fund capital projects. Next slide. So advanced meter infrastructure, this is smart meters. We're looking for a program manager that would run the automated meter infrastructure program. The program itself will modern, modernize our meter reading process, providing, providing real-time system and customer usage data. So they can go in to the computer and look up their usage. Um, it will manage the overall program, which is the meter installation and software implementation. But it also will do some data analysis, and a key thing here is this is a three-department program. It involves OIT, finance, and public works. We need somebody that will work with all the stakeholders and, um, and the public, making sure that this is a success. And I think we have often not thought of, hey, once this is implemented, who's gonna run it? So we're trying to get ahead of that, make sure whoever we hire is in on the beginning stages of how we're implementing the program, what we end up purchasing, and then can run it as, as it, um, becomes mature. Um, some of the benefits of the meter reading that, the advanced meter reading that we're looking for is, um, to increase utility revenue by decreasing leak adjustments. We spend about a million dollars a year adjusting bills that have been though, uh, they, customers find a leak. Usually it takes three months because they just get a high bill, and that's kind of indicates, oh, I must have a leak. Um, so if they could figure that out and notice that a lot earlier, they're not wasting all that water, and then we're not having to adjust it later down the road. Um, also will reduce the need for estimated bills and non-revenue, non-revenue generating water loss. And it will provide customers more control of their water usage. So if they're trying to save money, they can look, when am I, is my, am I taking too long showers? Do I, you know, they'll be able to look at a timeline of what their peak usage is. So, um, we think this is gonna be a really great program for the public, and we do need someone, though, to run it. Next slide. Backflow prevention, um, we are asking for position for backflow prevention. I kind of want to give a very, you know, one oh one, or, you know, maybe ninety-nine, um, version of backflow prevention. It is, backflow is the unwanted flow of water, other liquids that get into the water distribution system. It's somewhat easy to do. Um, so it's required through plumbing code that all, um, back, all new um, new residential and commercial buildings be equipped with fire suppression. Um, that have fire suppression and lawn irrigation systems have backflow preventers. There's about thirteen thousand within the county water system, and that just keeps growing. The ones we're talking about are the testable backflow preventers. Um, usually they're, like I said, on a fire suppression or irrigation system. Next slide. If we don't have these backflow preventers, I know this is a really dramatic and gross slide, but just to give you an idea of the consequences, um, and that have, have real, real consequences that have happened in other jurisdiction, and fortunately for us, not ours, but where, you know, backflow from, like fungicides that are used for on the, their grounds to keep, you know, everything looking pretty, have gotten into water supply through backflow prevention not working. Um, this toilet here with the, uh, hose in it, it, that's as easy as it is possible to cause a backflow prevention event within your system. So what we're asking for, next slide, is a plumbing inspector. The plumbing inspector would, what, right now, all we do is rely on private plumbers that are hired by homeowners to submit inspection reports. So then we check a box, okay, the homeowners have done what they need to do to make sure their backflow preventer works. It's just a paper exercise. There's no actual visual work that we're doing. So we're looking for a plumbing inspector to start going out and confirming that these are really being, being, um, inspected as we are getting these reports, and that there is no danger of cross-contamination. So, um, it's a modest request considering the number of backflow preventers, but it's a start for us to kind of beef up this program. Next slide. Again, utilities has, has a very, um, modest request. In fiscal year O two, we had three hundred and sixty-two employees and a hundred and thirteen thousand customers. And fiscal year twenty-three, um, three hundred and eighty employees. Those employees were transfers of, um, project managers out of the general fund into the utility fund. I think the actual real positions that were added was about three, an electrical technician, an instrumentation technician, and I can't remember what the third one was right now. Um, so again, it's not like we're asking for a ton of positions in utilities. So we're really hoping you guys will see the need, but this year it's, we're asking for those three. Next slide. I wanted to point out a big expense to just give you a sense of what we're facing. This is just one example of high costs, but just to really see what's happening in our, in the utility for cost. Chemical costs have increased to an outrageous number. I mean, I will show you a chart in the next. We have to have chemicals in order to treat water and wastewater. We have no choice. It's required. Um, we did recently rebid the contracts, so these are fresh numbers. But our chemicals, we spend over seven million a year for all of our water and wastewater treatment plant, plants combined. So next slide. This is just a chart to show you of how crazy the increases have been. You look at sodium bisulfate, it has gone up four hundred and fifty-one percent. But even the forty-four percent, the seventy-five percent, these are critical chemicals we have to have in our system. That second column gives you an idea what they're used for and what the rates were in twenty-two and what they are in our newly, um, rebid contracts. So, you know, part of our increase is unavoidable. Just like everyone else, you're paying more at the grocery store, paying more for gas or for, you know, repairs to your home. We're paying more too. They're not giving us a special government discount, unfortunately. So I just wanted to make, bring that to your attention to understand what we're facing. Next slide. I know the county executive mentioned the robot. Here's a picture of the robot. Um, one of the utility funds also has a big reliance upon heavy equipment, and that has to be replaced. It's, it's usually very specialized equipment. The specific thing that the county executive is talking about is called a Q's truck. It looks like a utility truck, but inside it has cameras, video equipment. And this camera attached to wheels is the robot that he's talking about. Um, needs a, needs a name, so maybe we'll have a contest for that. The, again, we're the same as with highways, utilities facing the same thing, at least thirty percent increase in costs, and then the delivery times extended. So, um, I just wanted to give you a visual of what that, when he, when the county executive mentioned a robot in public works, that's what it is. It's really a camera on wheels. And that, our equipment in utilities is over almost three million dollars. Next. So, and how are we doing this? We're gonna have to raise the rates. I know it's a dirty word, but it is like really necessary, and no one hates asking for rate increases more than public works, but we gotta do what we gotta do. So let me ride through what we are doing here. Um, our current rates, how the utility enterprise fund works, this is just a one oh one. Um, I know you, the folks that have been here probably already remember this, but just in case, it's a review. We have current user rates. That's what you pay on your water bill for the actual usage of your water. That money goes to your, our operating expense and pay-go that pays for some of the capital that's in our operating budget. On your water bill, you also have an EPF, environmental protection fee. That is thirty-five percent of your bill, of your usage. And that goes to system rehabilitation. That's the maintaining of things that we have to do. And then there's a capital facility connection charge. That is for system expansion and growth. That's typically what developers and new homes, when they want to connect to the county water and sewer, have to pay that, and it's pretty isolated. If you are growing our system, you have to pay for that growth. And that's where that fee comes in. Next slide. So, um, just giving you an idea, what, what, this year we're asking for nine percent. And then it does look like in our forecasting, based if the costs continue as they have been, um, what our forecast is through fiscal year twenty-nine, when we look at our rate model. Um, and I know nine percent sounds like a lot, but you can see what we're facing with costs going up. Next slide. So rate history, again, we try not to ask for more money, especially if we can make do with what we have. So, um, you can see we have modest increases. Well, actually, we had a decrease in seventeen, and we were able to maintain that for three years. And then, um, a modest increase in twenty, which we've been able to maintain, and then a little, we had five percent last year. So, um, that just gives you a sense of our history. So next slide. And even with that, even with nine percent increase, we are still the lowest water sewer annual bill in the region. Um, WSSC up there near the top, that's Prince George's in Montgomery County. So again, I just want you to kind of take that in, what we're talking about here. Um, next slide. So other jurisdictions also are raising their rates. What the slide before was what they are now before anybody's gotten any increases. Baltimore City, um, and City of Annapolis, WSSC all have rate increases, um, planned. So you can again see we're pretty low and modest in when we ask for our requests, or try to be. Next slide. All right, any questions about utility fund?
I'll see, Ms. Fiedler, your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Would now be the appropriate time to ask additional questions about the new, new meter system?
Yeah, sure, please.
Okay, and I appreciate you clarifying that the, the study being done to look at all of the different categories for EDUs is absolutely separate. Um, because I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record. I get a lot of questions about that. Um, but with regard to the advanced meter system, um, or the automated meter system, would that be for both residential and commercial?
Yes.
Okay, and then how would each homeowner or business owner get a new meter? Would it be rolled out in some fashion, or is that yet to be determined based on whoever's?
So we already have some meters that are already compatible with this advance. So we're planning for the future, as we've been replacing new meters, that's what we've been putting in, ones that are compatible with this system. I think we have about eighty thousand more to go. We have a hundred and thirty-some thousand connections. Um, so those would be rolled out probably in a, we, we're looking at how other jurisdictions have done it. And when they've done all a hundred thousand people at one time, they've not been successful. So we're probably gonna be doing this in a graduated process. That's what we're looking at right now. But we do have consultants helping us with what have other jurisdictions done that have they've learned from. So, um, I see it, though, as more of a graduated this section of the, you know, we, we right now do our billing in cycles. We have nine cycles. So if we could do cycle one, cycle two, you know, I don't know, that's how we're looking, looking at, maybe that's one option of how we would roll it out.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, I think, uh, you're pleased to see?
Okay, um, on to solid waste. Next slide. Okay, solid waste. It's, uh, over seventy-eight million dollars. You can see significant significant, significantly, um, contractual services. That's our main, main thing here. Very little personal services in order to keep this bureau going. Next slide. What does that, those contractual services pay for? Mostly curbside collection. That's our big, big one. But we also have to take that trash somewhere, and that's our disposal services, about a little over ten million dollars. Um, and we use local vendors to, um, do our curbside collections. There's, they're specialized jobs, and we're proud of the fact that we have these, um, you know, we, we all work together, private and, uh, government to make sure that the trash is collected and have a well-maintained system. Next. Um, we have about nine hundred thousand visitors a year to our three recycling centers. We collect about three quarters of the household trash in Anaronda County. We don't collect the City of Annapolis trash, and we don't do condominiums or businesses. Um, but we are serving about a hundred and seventy thousand curbside customers a year, and that's what this graph is showing. These two graphs are showing you. Next slide. So recycling, we still are major fans of recycling, and we continue to encourage that. And we're really grateful to everyone who is a great recycler in our county, uh, because that is the cheapest way to go here. When, for, it costs us, um, unit cost for composting yard waste is twenty-three dollars. Mulching is thirty-seven, recycling thirty-eight, and if you do curbside, I'm sorry, a ton, what did I say? It's, uh, thirty-eight dollars a ton. Um, for disposal, actual curbside, where, where we're taking our curbside trash, that's sixty-three dollars a ton. So, um, it's most cost-effective if folks are recycling or composting yard waste. So next slide. Um, our revenue sources for solid waste come from our solid waste service charge, which is on the property tax bill. Um, anyone who gets curbside collection is paying that tax. Also at the landfill, if you have a commercial vehicle, you pay eighty-five percent, eighty-five dollars a ton disposal fee. Um, that was last set in fiscal year twenty-two, and that, that takes up about ten percent of our operating revenue. Next slide. So we are, again, asking for an increase in rates here. I know it's painful, um, painful for us too. But we're looking at eleven percent increase. Um, you can see here, this is the forecast for the next few years. Next slide. Again, Anaronda County, we're pretty cheap. So, I mean, people are getting a good, uh, value for their money. I know they don't think they are, but I think, you know, with the money, it shows on these graphs that we've been sharing with you. Next slide. All right, anything about solid waste you want to ask?
No, ma'am. I see no hands, uh, being raised at this point.
All right, we can go on to watershed protection. That's our last one. This is our watershed protection and restoration fund. Next slide. This budget request, twenty-seven million. This is our smallest bureau as far as, um, money. You can see the green, that's our debt service. Most of the funding, what we get from our fee, goes toward the capital projects that improve the waterways. Next slide. Stormwater fees, again, another increase, five percent on the stormwater fee. Again, that's on your tax, folks pay, uh, if you don't, um, yes, that's, that's paid on the taxes, sorry. Um, you can see forecasting, we're looking at five percent into fiscal year twenty-nine. Next slide. Again, Anaronda County is way down there, look, looking at our areas, Baltimore City, Charles County, Montgomery County, um, we, we give a good value at ninety-three dollars. Next slide. All right, any questions?
None, right as I put that cookie in my mouth.
You guys are being easy on me, really? I can't believe it.
I think people recognize the importance of, uh, backflow not, you know, coming back into our house or our water and, uh, how that is significant, uh, safety, uh, concerns when it comes to us. But I do see, uh, Ms. Hummer's, uh, name or hand up.
Yes, I just want to say that, uh, it's really astounding the price increase in those chemicals to come through. That's really incredible, and it's not anything we have control over, but that's
That's, it's competitively big contracts, and that's what they came up with the pricing. So, um, there's a, there's one that, the one that is kind of no competition out there, but most of them have competition, and that's, that's the cheapest we could get, so.
A lot, a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep, please.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Henry. I think it's, um, really important to show the kind of slides that you showed today, not just for the policymakers, but also for any constituents watching at home or want to look at this information. It is complicated, and turning on our faucets, I think we all take for granted what, what's behind the scenes. So I think you did a great job, and I, I always appreciate the comparisons and where we are, and, you know, just the facts, um, being presented. So we can more easily discuss, um, increases or staffing with our constituents. Um, we've got to keep the water clean and that backflow going where it's supposed to go, right?
Yes, yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, uh, Ms. Leviter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if you wouldn't mind,
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if you wouldn't mind, uh, uh, and just going into a little bit more detail. About what is um, the main drivers for the increase on the solid waste charges? Um, I understand on the, the wastewater side, we were talking about the chemicals. If you could just give us a few. I'm sure that there is data and a reasoning for it, if you wouldn't mind just expounding a little bit on that.
Okay, yes. So contractual services has gone up five point nine million dollars. That's a three point two million increase in curbside collection contracts. Um, they get adjusted with C P I. Um, so and fuel adjustments, that's part of their contract. Um, we have a one point seven million increase for our out-of-area disposal under a new contract pricing that was effective mid-April twenty-twenty-three. So again, recently bid and that's the pricing that came up with. And some smaller amounts, four hundred and seventy-five thousand for increase in single-stream recyclables. Um, and three hundred and thirty-four thousand in uh, direct charge vehicles due to the higher fuel prices and fuel tax. And then two hundred and nine thousand increase for brush grinding and composting contract costs and that's again due to C P I. Um, we have some smaller amounts, uh, capital outlay, which is heavy equipment. They also, heavy equipment are used in um, our waste management services at the landfill and at the recycling centers. And that increase was two hundred and two thousand dollars. Um. We pay pro-rata shares, so all of the enterprise funds have to pay the general fund. And in this case, for solid waste, they also pay the utility fund for water and sewer services. Um, that has gone up six hundred and ten thousand dollars. So let's see, there's some like onesie twosies, but I think that kind of gives you a picture. Overall increase is six point six four million dollars from last year to this year and that's where the increase is coming from.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Did I miss anything, Rhodey, on that?
Uh, no, you, you covered all the increases for the, for the fiscal year and the other, I guess the other main driver is the fund balance. Um, there's an operating policy to maintain a ten percent fund balance in the solid waste fund. And we've been consuming that fund balance over the past few years. Um, so now when you look at uh, spending uh, forecast for next year, along with revenue forecast for next year. You see that you need a rate increase to maintain the fund balance.
Thanks, Rhodey. That, that's true too for the utility fund as well.
All right, well, thank you for uh, all of the, the data. Uh, seeing, I don't see any additional hands for questions being uh, raised. So at this time, we're gonna transition. Uh, appreciate you Karen for all of the feedback on this. This was definitely an awesome brief. We're gonna switch over to uh, utilities.
Uh, utilities was covered, so we are done as far as all public works. So utility, solid waste and general fund are all finished.
And.
Sorry for going off script. I apologize.
And I saw the DPW. Now what I will do, since we're off of that piece of it is. Um. Uh, at some point, I want to sit down with you and I think uh, Madam Vice Chair does as well. Uh, because I think there are some D P W pieces that's not necessarily budget related, but questions related when it comes to the capital side. And so I won't, uh, sort of elongate this process uh, by going down that rabbit hole. But uh, I'll certainly be in touch to schedule some time to sit with your, uh, I guess your, your capital office, your, your estimates, the people that do all of the uh. Calculations.
Yeah, Bureau of Engineering and, and we do have um, estimations that are done through the capital projects, yes.
Okay.
We're happy to meet with you.
Yes, ma'am. So Madam uh, Vice Chair, so I see solid waste, utilities, D P W, um. Is, is that it for today?
Yes, you are, you took the, you, you did the express presentation this morning.
Wow, okay. Um. That was. It's good to hear. So uh, is there any other business uh, to be brought before this county council? All right, I do want to remind everyone, our first public hearing, one that overall proposed uh, F Y twenty-four budget. Uh, is this Thursday, seven P M. In our chambers in Annapolis. Uh, on the council's website, there is a dedicated F Y twenty-four page. Uh, here you will find information on how to testify or comment on the proposed uh, F Y twenty-four budget for Anaronda County. Uh, seeing no additional comments or hands, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair, Allison Pickard.
Sir, a second.
Second, Amanda Fiedler.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Are there any opposed? All right, the motion carries. The county council is adjourned until two, tomorrow, Wednesday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-three at nine A M. Where we will meet virtually uh, for the last batch of F Y twenty-four budget presentations from the administration. Uh, that being said, uh, have, wow, I feel like I got a whole day back. Uh, enjoy the rest of your day.